I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the municipal, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. Let the record show that all members of the city council are present tonight. There is a copy of the Open Meetings Act posted in the meeting room and it is accessible to the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. First item on the agenda, item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on November 16th, 2015, as on file in the city clerk's office. Item E, approval of minutes of work session on November 23rd, 2015, as on file in the city clerk's office. Item F, approval of treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $174,253.54. Item G, approval of Boswa report of claims in the amount of $12,195.9. Item H, approval of the renewal agreement for maintenance agreement number four between the city of Beatrice and the state of Nebraska Department of Roads, as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item I, resolution number 5836, appointing Councilman Ted Fairbanks to the Beatrice Plus Advisory Board. Item J, approval of a bid for a 2017 Mack GU 813 rolloff truck for the landfill from RDO in the amount of $148,250. Item K, refer claim of Michelle Kealan regarding damages to her property located at 808 Perkins Street to city attorney and city insurance carrier for review and disposition. Item L, resolution number 5837, authorizing Jay Husker Antique Car Club and their designees permission to sell or offer for sale or pedal goods, wares, or merchandise upon city property located in Chautauqua Park. Item M, resolution number 5838, recognizing the contribution and commitment of Chris Baffel in her service to the city of Beatrice and the city of Beatrice Library Board. Item N, resolution number 5839, appointing Christine Hulse to the city of Beatrice Library Board. Item O, resolution number 5840, creating a pedestrian crosswalk on Center Street between Court Street and the vacated Scott Street. Item P, resolution number 5841, entering into a letter agreement for professional services with Felsberg, Holt, and Ulevig to provide an on-call MS4 compliance assistance services, Task Six, Municipal Good Housekeeping. Item Q, resolution number 5842, entering into a second amended and restated interlocal cooperation agreement addendum for the procurement and delivery of the new Southeast 911 system. And item R, resolution number 5843, entering into a solution proposal service agreement with Airbus DS Communications for software and services associated with the Southeast Regional 911 Center Communication System. And just for the record, item R is going to be deleted from this because further information is going to be required. Is there any item that a city council member would like removed from the consent agenda? Anyone from the public? Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I move that all the items listed under the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
By Catlin, seconded by Partey, I'm sorry, Cook. That the items under the consent agenda be approved. Your vote, please. And that is approved, eight zero. There are no public hearings or bids this evening or resolutions. The next item on the agenda is an ordinance repealing section 16-167 of the Beatrice City Code relating to through traffic alleys. Through traffic in alleys.
Mayor, I move that said ordinance be given number 15-019. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
And moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbach, that ordinance, that said ordinance be given number 15-09. The title thereof be approved and rules be suspended. And that it be read three times tonight. We have with us the chief of police, Bruce Lang. I'm sorry. I beg your pardon.
Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable.
Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, so your vote, please. That is approved, eight zero. Now discussion? All right, I'll read ordinance number 15-019 by number the first time. Ordinance number 15-019 by, by, by number the second time. And ordinance number 15-019 by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I move that ordinance number 15-019 be passed and approved.
By Catlin, seconded by Partey, that ordinance number 15-019 be passed and approved. Now discussion. Mr. Lang?
Thank you very much, Bruce Lang, Chief of Police. We talked a little bit about this at the work session, but just for the benefit of the people here and at home, recap a little bit about how we got where we are today. There's currently an ordinance on the books that makes it a violation of the ordinance to drive through an alley to go from point A to point B. And summation. And some period, a couple of years ago, actually, a local county court judge deemed that that ordinance was not enforceable because in his words, "Everyone does that." That was a true statement. We not only have alleys that we've paved to make them better to go through. We have signage within the city that directs people that they have to drive through the alley to go from point A to point B. It's something that's done throughout town. You couple those things together, that makes it just unenforceable from a law enforcement point of view. The traffic committee talked about this and agreed. And as we've talked over the years, we don't like to have laws on the books in which we can't enforce. So we need to either enforce the law or, in this case, what we're recommending is to delete the law. We understand the issue where traffic may kind of be diverted down an alley because of the lay of the land, so to speak. In this case, most of the folks are concerned about an area near the Catholic Church where those vehicles are diverted. Or they come out and so the people go through the alley. And in that case, they are basically doing that as a result of the one-way streets. Councilman Fairbanks brought it out before. If you recall, some period back, the traffic committee also recommended that we change those to two-way streets. And council at that point chose not to do that, but that exasperates the problem, so to speak. So that's kind of where we're at today. That's why we've, we're faced with this issue. As we talked earlier, there's, sometimes there's not a popular solution to a problem. We can't enforce that. If the ordinance stays on the books, we're in the same quandary we are in right now, and that is can't write a ticket for it because the county judge has already made the ruling that it's not enforceable because it's a common violated rule. So we're kind of in a pickle here as well. So that's why our suggestion, our recommendation, my recommendation, and the traffic committee's recommendation is that we delete or remove the ordinance.
Discussion? Ted?
Two things.
Yes, sir.
Can, could you? I agree with you. We, we need to just do away with the ordinance. As I said before when we talked about the last. If you can't, if you can't tick it for it, can't enforce it, shouldn't be there. Okay, and I agree with you. The second thing is, could you write him a tic, could you write a ticket for skirting a stop sign? I know that's, that's
I'm sorry, what?
Skirting a stop sign?
Skirting, what's that mean?
It's, it's a state law.
You mean for not stopping at a stop sign?
Yeah, well, if you're skirting, it's in the
Oh, I'm sorry.
I got a little bit of a, sorry.
I got you now.
Yeah, so it's state law that, you know, so like if you cut through a parking lot to avoid a stoplight or some traffic device, it's skirting.
Right, okay.
Could you, would that be enforceable at that point?
Yes, it would because you don't have a ruling saying you don't have a ruling saying it isn't. Here we have a specific ruling saying it.
Okay, I still lean towards the doing away with the one-way streets because this isn't just the problem there. This is a problem on
Oh, absolutely. It's just probably presented to us
Well, we, I had a phone call tonight, I mean, this, from a gentleman who lives on LA, he has the same problem between LA and Elk. They have the same
Oh, yeah. Right.
Between the Daily Sun and the Christian Church and the First Bank there and from all the way up. And so, you know, this isn't the only place. And so I still lean towards getting rid of the one ways to, to you know, this isn't just the only problem with that. But that was my question is, is that something would be enforceable? Could you go that route?
I don't think so.
Okay.
That doesn't fit to me.
It's a little outside, it's a little outside the box, but you might ask the judge if
Counselor is indicating that maybe no.
No?
One of the reasons, since if we use the Catholic Church issue as an example, if they were to proceed down Seventh Street to Grant, correct? There's no stop sign there. They're not bypassing a stop sign by proceeding forward, so there's no skirting of a stop sign. They're just choosing not to go down half a block and then east and then down to the south. If that's where they're going even.
First solution.
Any other questions from the council? Rich?
Would there be a way to, you say we use the alleys. Would there be a way to put signage up to, would it be enforceable if you can go through the alleys or you cannot go through the alleys unless otherwise posted? Would that be enforceable?
It's already posted there.
There's a sign up now.
Well, some of them are and some of them aren't. The one at the Catholic Church is, but there's other ones.
You can make ordinance, you can develop and adopt an ordinance that makes driving in a fashion, in a specific area restrictive. You could make, you can make that, and Greg, throw something at me if I misspeak. You can make a street a certain speed limit if you want. You can make it directional if you want. Those are all things that you can do. You could put a stop sign in an alley if you wanted. You can do those things. So the answer to, there are regulatory things you can do in a specific alley. We talked about, they can do a paving district and put speed bumps with the agreement of the city in them. Not a bad solution in this particular case of the one right there. I mean, those things are all doable. What we're talking about here is a citywide ordinance that says you can't drive the UPS truck down the alley to go from point A to point B. You can't drive the prescription delivery guy can't use the alley to go down there. I mean, that's, that's what this ordinance, this ordinance is a broad thing that we're simply saying that it's, it's been deemed not enforceable and the practicality of it, had the judge not even said that the practicality of it is that we not only, it's done routinely, we direct people in different parts of our community to do that, through our own signage.
The only, the only, the only real problem I've got is around the schools. I went down Friday and after school was out and the one at the Catholic Church, I sat there and kind of watched. There was some kids coming down that alley. And I don't know if, how fast they, because I didn't see a car go through there at the time. But the safety of the kids are kind of a concern to me. I was thinking maybe around schools and stuff, you know, because we do, we do block off streets there around the middle school and such to where they're safe. And I was thinking, you know, possibly a block or two block areas around the school that the alleys are not accessible. While there's school going on, I don't know.
And we block, and we block around schools and direct people to drive down the alley.
And as far as the two-way streets, the public has already spoke on that. And we've already, we've already addressed that, so I hope we don't go back to having to address that again.
Mr. Partey?
Short of having an officer present at these alleys, one, is there anything that the citizens can do? Can they call in complaints as far as speeding or reckless driving or?
Anybody can call in a speeding or reckless driving complaint.
Or anything, no, versus not having a
They would have to testify to what they saw, since nobody else saw it. And that's not a very popular thing with citizens to do that, but that's an option.
Mr. Kerr?
But as far as reckless driving and turning people in, I've turned in a couple, and I was told by the police department that if they didn't see it, there's nothing they can do about it.
Right, we can't, we can't, if we didn't see it, we can't
If I testify that says that they did it, you can do something?
You testify in court, if you're willing to go testify in court, absolutely. And we've done that. And very often, because most citizens don't want to do that.
Well, I think that our officers should be telling the public that if you are willing to testify in court, we can do something about it. But not just say, we didn't see it, we can't see any, we can't do anything about it.
Any other council member? Anybody from the public? I'd ask you to state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Chris Jacobson. I live at 430 North Seventh Street in Beatrice here. Would be the alley by the Catholic Church there, the 400 block. I live on the west end of that alley. I'm here to testify. Me and my children, we live on the edge of that alley that people go speeding down. I have maybe some, some options that I kind of did some research on. Making that alley, taking away or allowing people to drive down that alley would create a nuisance through section 17, 181, permitting a condition to exist which injures or endangers the comfort, health, or safety of others, which would be my children and the children who walk down that alley to and from school. Middle schoolers use that alley. My children use that alley to not only play, play near, ride their bikes near, but they use it to go to and from school. In my, in the particular alley in that block, maybe can we designate using section 16, point 81, designate it as a play street? Which would severely limit traffic down that particular alley. You put signage up designating that as such, which would limit, which would limit people to drive down that alley who only have business or reside on that street due to the children playing in the area. You can put signage up at both ends of that alley, and that would help limit traffic, and that would be something that could be enforceable from the city ordinance. I just that's why I'm here to testify. So I'm very concerned about my children's safety if this ordinance, if something's not done to my particular alley once this ordinance is repealed. That's what, I'm just here about my children, so.
Okay. Any questions, Chris? Anybody? Rich?
Those were two of the little boys I saw Friday.
Yeah.
Just to let you know.
Counselor?
Chris, do you own your property?
Yes, I do. Well, the bank owns it. I pay the mortgage.
One of, I don't know if it was at a previous meeting about your alley, but a discussion was, you guys have a gravel rock alley, correct?
Yes, we do.
One of the discussions was whether there was any interest in paving your alley, one, to reduce dust and things like that in the summer. Has there even been discussion by anybody in your area of that?
Oh.
Because that would help with what I believe Councilman Fairbanks or, or Partey said in regards to speed bumps, which I think would divert
Last, last word I had was that the city was willing to pave that if we paid for it.
Right, works.
Because I don't, James might know, but I don't think we could install speed bumps in there unless it was paved. I don't know if we can do speed bumps on some sort
You can't.
I didn't think you would be able to, so.
We've gone through that before, so.
You gotta remember, one issue you're gonna have with speed bumps is obviously snow removal. You're gonna have a street department that doesn't want speed bumps in there before the snow removal, so we, it's something we'd have to figure out how to make that work.
And the gravel or the rock in the alley during the winter time helps with traction just due to the grade of our particular alley that we live on. So there, there has to be some sort of ice melting or snow or gravel consideration when it does get, if it does come to snow removal in that alley. The other issue I'd have with allowing people just to drive down that alley wholesale would be the alley has restricted peripheral vision just due to the poles and the buildings close to that alley. If I'm backing out of my driveway and somebody comes blowing down that alley because the city ordinance says they can do that now and they hit me, it's my fault. Even though my field of vision is very limited to maybe 10 or 20 degrees as I'm backing out instead of on a residential street where it could be 180 degrees as I'm backing out of my driveway. That is my other concern with, with not putting some sort of traffic measure in not just my alley, but other alleys as well. But obviously, the children's, is my concern for my particular section.
Ted?
It's, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but it's not your belief that if we remove this ordinance, that the traffic through your alley is going to increase?
I already have issues with people speeding down that alley. And once the city condones that activity, it's only gonna get worse.
I, I would, I would frame this to you that the people that are using the alley, it's not going to increase simply because the ordinance has been removed. The ordinance is there, and the signs are there, and they're ignoring it because it's not enforceable. We're simply removing an ordinance that we can't enforce. I think that you, I think you have, you have a legitimate concern and you have a legitimate issue. But you, the solution that you seek is in a different vein than more signage and more ordinances.
I'm just trying, I tried to provide a couple of options to the council to maybe remedy the situation in my particular alley. But that's
Yep. Those are, the things that you brought up, those, those are really difficult to enforce as well. And they are, and I understand.
I understand they're difficult to enforce, but I'm not willing to bet my children's life on that.
I'm not, and if, we obviously need, in a future work session, we need to discuss this. The things that he's brought up and the traffic flow in the area, and that would be my suggestion. Mayor, that we put this on in late December or January, and because I think that everybody's set on the ordinance. I, like I said, I don't think it changes, so that would be my suggestions.
Anybody else? Anybody else from the public? Thanks, Chris.
You're welcome.
Good job, boys.
Good, how you doing?
Good. My name's Todd Klaus. I live at 426 North Seventh in Beatrice, that same alley, right across from Chris, to the south. You know, listening to Chief Lang, you know, I understand it's hard. It's hard to enforce something like that. And, but I think there are other ways we can enforce it. Yes, we have a sign that says, "No through traffic." Now, I don't know about everybody's definition of "no through traffic," but mine is, is if you live in that city block, you have the right to come into that alley. If you do not live in that square block, you should have no business in there unless you are emergency personnel. Unless you are a city worker or maybe a delivery truck, something like that, or somebody coming over to see a friend. You should have some purpose for being in that block. You know, I know we do get some traffic from the church, Catholic church after church. I don't have a big problem with that. I do have a little bit of problem with, you know, they want to shoot straight across when they, it's less than a half a block. It's maybe an eighth of a block to go a little bit north to shoot over eights, shoot if they need to. I mean, it's not that big of a deal. I too thought maybe signage would be a good way to go. I think if you put a sign up that says, "Do not enter" with the sign below it that says, you know, "No through traffic," maybe that would get, get through a little clearer to people. If not, take it one step farther. Don't put the "do not enter" sign up. Put the "no through traffic" and violators will be prosecuted, plain and simple. I don't know how much plainer it can be than that. Them boys back there, you know, I watch them come from school every day. Somebody's gonna get hit the way people fly through there. And Ted, I would have to, have to disagree with you. I think it will increase traffic because we've seen it. We've seen traffic go through there, and then all of a sudden, it stops when it becomes an issue. When they took the sign down, because that sign is in my yard, I saw all kinds of traffic rolling through there. I mean, it's, it's unfortunate that we can't enforce it, but there's a reason why that was put on the books 25, 30 years ago. There's a reason. I don't know if anybody did any research on it. Did somebody get hit? Did somebody get killed? There's a reason why it's there. I don't see that anything has changed so much in the last 30 years that all of a sudden, we don't need to have it on the books anymore. There was a reason why it was put in. There's a reason council members, excuse me, at one time, put that on the books, you know? As far as
But if it's not enforceable, Todd, what would you have us do?
I think the signage. I think communicate it to the public. We don't need more officer traffic there. You know, they got bigger fish to fry than trying to get speeders coming through the alleys. You know, I'll give you that, you know? Communicate it through the paper, the radio, the paper. I don't know, more signage, something. I think we need to do something rather than do nothing and just abolish it from the record from the law, to get rid of it. I think there is something to do, and, you know, again, maybe Ted's right. Maybe we need to step back and have some more meetings and talk about this and say, hey, what do we do? I'm not against paving the alley, but if we pave it, I think it's just gonna be a raceway through there. I think more people are gonna be coming through there. You know, and snow removal, you put a speed bump in there, it's gonna be a pain for anybody that has to come through and clean that alley. So I, I wouldn't necessarily be in favor of that either. But there, there's something that we can do. So.
Any questions of Todd?
The other, one last thing I'd like to add. To me, if the council votes this out, we're gonna abolish this. To me, if a kid gets hit in that alley and the parents of that child says, "Hey, we're gonna sue," and more than likely, they're gonna sue whoever hit that child. I think there's a possible liability standpoint from the city because they took us off the books. I don't know. I'm not a lawyer, but I could see the lawyer of that family going after the deepest pocketbooks, and they're gonna look into that and say, "Why did the city take those signs down? Why did they get rid of that?" So, I don't know. I, you're all smarter than I am, but I think, I think there's something that we can do about this. You know? I, you know, if one person, child or none, gets hit and killed in that alley, one is too many. We have to do something about it. So, that's all I have.
Good, thanks, Todd. Anybody else? Dennis, for the record, your name and address, please.
Bill Caderas, 429 North Eighth.
Sorry, Bill, not Dennis.
Okay. Well, I've lived in that same house for over 23 years. And the police have never, as far as I know, ever issued a ticket. And the judge just came up with this two or three years ago about not enforcing it, what's been going on the past previous 20 years.
And to answer your question, don't know.
Yeah. It's lack of law enforcement. The sign was taken down. The traffic committee had it reinstalled. That never slowed nobody up. There's one gal that comes through there, she tested that speed limit here a week ago. She almost didn't get stopped because she went halfway across Eighth Street. And she's one person I've turned in several times. I've also told the policemen when they, when they show up, I would testify against them in court. All they have to do is write a ticket and I'll be going. Some policemen have told me that they'd like to write a ticket for, when they see how bad that alley's tore up through them tires and speeding through there, they'd like a ticket for reckless driving. But their hands are, hands are tied. So I don't know about this judge. Maybe we need a new county judge. Somebody's gonna enforce something. Has anybody asked Greg if, if there's a ticket wrote, if the judge throws it out, would he appeal the case?
You can ask him right now.
Well, you're the mayor.
I understand that.
I'd ask him.
You're asking, you're asking a legal question, and I'm not, not an attorney.
If I was instructed by the council and the mayor, city administration to appeal that decision, I would appeal that decision to the Court of Appeals.
Okay, so if
Or District Court, I mean.
If a ticket is wrote out and the ordinance on the books, it could be enforced.
Well, it could be appealed. And then we could see if a different judge or a different panel of judges sees it differently.
Okay, and also this is more of Todd's thing, if, if all traffic's appealed and repealed in Beatrice. You got, you got someone driving down the street in the daytime, he's got open container, he's drinking. Or you got somebody that's suspended license. They see an officer coming a block away towards them. Well, the speed limit's 25 in an alley. They're gonna take off and highball through an alley so they don't get stopped. So you got children, grandchildren, nieces and nephews. You got some kids got children, grandchildren, nieces and nephews. You got some kids, these boys back here, any place in town, playing in, in their backyard, playing ball, playing football, softball. Here comes a car 30, 40 mile an hour, they get, they hit, hit one or two kids, injure them real bad or kill them. Who's gonna be liable? Them people have no insurance. Who's the parents gonna go after? I think it's gonna go after the first people to appeal the city ordinance.
Any questions of Bill? Anybody?
And I have, I have passed over 100 city ordinance out to the people coming through. Some are nice enough not to come back through again. Some just come a little faster. And a lot of it is respect. You can't find no respect from a lot of them people. They just show you they can do whatever they want because they can get by with it. And also, you talk about speeds. At the parks, they're only 15 miles an hour, and the chief's talking about 25. On the internet, you're gonna find any place in any alleys between 5 and 15.
Chief, you wanna address that? I think you mentioned that earlier regarding the speed limit.
The speed limits are set by council. If it's a city street, it's set by the state if it's a state highway. Um, there's a default, which means that if they don't set a specific change to it, it's 25 miles an hour inside the city. Um, they can make it 5 miles an hour, 10 miles an hour, 100 miles an hour, um, but if they're, if it's not regulated in some fashion, then it defaults back to 25.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions of Bill?
I've also had some, some policemen tell me, "If I don't like it, call the Nebraska Attorney General." Maybe I should have. We got some state patrolmen down there, passed 15 years, and wrote some tickets out.
I think, Bill, there, there's a lot of hypothetical things we're talking about here.
Well, I'm talking about-
And unless we've got some factual information, um, I, I think we need to move on. Uh, is there anything new that you wanna bring up?
Well, if they ever dismiss it, you know, at least, uh, grandfathered in about "No Through Traffic," but I don't know if you can do that in or not. If it's already been approved, "No Through Traffic," you can grandfather that in and keep them out. Can't do that.
City attorney.
What he's referring to is, in the ordinance that you're voting on tonight, there is a provision in there in a subsection that allows for, uh, I believe over 50% of the adjacent property owners to the alley to sign a petition of some sort and request that a "No Through Traffic" sign be installed, which is what was done previously, we thought, in regards to the alleyway, that were, one of the specific ones that Bill's talking about. A, a number of years ago, um, it was never kept on record anywhere that we could find. We didn't have a resolution in the past that noted that its sign would be installed, and so, uh, Bill was kind enough to go back out and speak with his neighbors, and they got another petition signed, uh, in the last month or so and brought that in, and so we made sure that the sign was reinstalled pursuant to the ordinance as it is written now. So, that's what he's asking about grandfathering, is people that have actually petitioned for that signage.
Okay. Rich?
What was the percentage on that petition?
100%.
100%, I believe, yeah.
100%.
Any other questions? Anything else, Bill?
Not right now.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? All right, gentlemen. Oh, I'm sorry. Lorraine?
I wasn't sure I was going to speak, but I am going to ask something now. I, I live at 721 Grant. I live on this notorious alley, and I live on the east end of, on the north, on the north side, and it's, this is, this is, I of course can't resist telling you this. This is a historic kind of boondoggle that we got from the past. That should be the street, and in order to have the courthouse located where it is, we have a T-shaped alley. My, my question to you folks is this. If, I understand what you're, what you need to do. You need to make something that's working, gonna work for the whole community. But we've, you've heard from us, we've got a problem, and it's not a problem we can solve ourselves. As citizens, you know, we've, you've heard this. And if we can't solve this ourselves, and we've got a problem that is a problem in Beatrice, what I guess I'm asking you is, what do we do next? Do you have, is there any solution you can suggest to us? I've heard about paved alleys, and we did investigate that when Rex was still here. Um, I think three of us talked to him, and we were told then, if we didn't have 100% support for the paving district, there was no point in going forward with that.
That's not true.
Well, that's not true.
Well, but that's what I was told at the time. And so, and so I'm, I'm just saying that that's why that was dropped, because there were some of us that thought that that would be some sort of solution for us. And now, you're saying, even if we do that, that this, and install the speed bumps, that there's, now we've got new issues with snow removal and other problems that other parts of this city, as the city of Beatrice is gonna be very happy with, and it sounds like those of us using that alley aren't gonna be very happy with either. So I guess what I'm just asking you is, we've, I understand wanting to have something systematic throughout the city that you can enforce, that works for everyone, but we seem to have a, a major, something that seems like it should be a major exception, or at least is a major problem. And so, I'm asking, if you go ahead and, and pass this tonight, because we're on the 30 times, I know how that works, then, then what do we do next?
Chief?
I, I will. Sitting here, I'm hoping you're gonna comfort me.
I am. I actually am.
Oh, good.
Um, actually, this is two-part, and it's somewhat germane to the issue, so, is, there's gotta be a way to solve this specific traffic issue, which is not the same as this ordinance we have out there that's not enforceable. By that, I mean whether it's paving, speed bumps, signage, vacating the alley. I mean, there's a host of things we can visit with, and what I would suggest is that our traffic committee meet with a group of them, of them being the people that live on that alley, and we try to come up with a solution to that problem that they all agree with. Doesn't, because it's, it is somewhat unique to that area and that group. And then we come back at a work session and talk about the solutions we've found, you know? I, we're, nobody's, nobody's, um, hard-hearted to the issue because nobody more than me wants to make sure that nobody gets hit by a car. I mean, that's what we're all about. Um, so I, I think we can find a solution. I don't know, right now, I don't know what that solution is, but there's, put a lot of smart people together, we ought to be able to figure out something. And so, my, my suggestion, aside from this ordinance, is that we do that, then we come back to you folks with some kind of an answer. Um, Rich?
Uh, I was thinking right along the same lines, Chief, and, uh, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to do it or not, but I would just like to put, uh, put in that we table this until the, uh, traffic committee and the, and the folks, uh, have a meeting and see if they can come up with it. We bring it back to a work session and see if we can, if we can figure something out here.
Let me get, let me throw out another suggestion. Maybe we go ahead and pass this ordinance, but I like the chief's idea of getting the property owners involved in trying to come up with a solution. They are the only ones that are here tonight regarding this particular issue.
But I have had a couple of phone calls on some other, other alleys, too, but, uh, that, I, I'd say go, go ahead with it, but to be honest with you, I'm gonna vote against this ordinance repeal, uh, just simply because of the safety issue, but I agree with you 100%. If they need to bring it to another workforce, we need to figure out something, so...
Mr. Partey?
I think it's a good idea. I think probably go ahead and pass this tonight, but work on it fast, like Ted suggested, too. But do you think part of your discussion, you could include some member from the Catholic Church?
Sure. Oh, yeah. I think, I think, yeah, I think you're talking about a traffic issue of all the affected people.
Well-
Yeah.
But it's not just this alley. I mean, you, you wanna, and I don't disagree with Dwight. I mean, you know, it's obviously, it has something to do with Catholic churches and the schools and things there, but you also have the issue down the street and up the street.
Right.
So, I mean, pick one.
Right.
You know, you're gonna put your finger in this, plug this hole, but, you know, you're, you're just-
Right.
Yeah. So, like I suggested, I think that we discussed this, but I didn't think to send it to the traffic committee because there's no one on the council on the traffic committee.
Right.
So...
We can fix that.
I, I, I've scratched my head white that is that as it is, but, yeah, there's no one on the council on the traffic committee.
That's correct.
I can't say very good. I'd, I'd be real good on that.
[laughing]
Thanks for volunteering.
You just gotta volunteer, Mayor.
Thanks, Chief. Thanks, Lorraine. Anyone else from the audience? Yes, sir. Come on up. Chris?
Yeah, I spoke earlier about this alley. If you guys, I agree, we need to bring this to a committee and figure out what to do, that maybe necessar, you know, I'm worried about my alley, to tell you the truth. I'm worried about my little section of, of earth. If you guys repeal that ordinance tonight and then take it to a committee, what happens to our alley in the meantime?
Well, but, but, we can do that in pretty short order, but we want your participation and the rest of your neighbors' participation in this.
But like all the signage that's on our alley, does that get taken down because this ordinance gets repealed now?
Uh, it's a great question.
Yes.
Yes.
The chief said they didn't have to.
Because that's what I'm, whether, I, I wanna, I want a solution. How that comes about, I'm, I wanna get a good solution together, but if you guys repeal this ordinance tonight, what happens to our alley in the meantime? Because that means all that signage is gonna go away.
He's, he's saying the signage is not going to-
Okay.
Until we make some, or come up with some kind of a solution, okay?
So-
That you're happy with and the city's happy with.
Okay. So the signage will stay up until we find a more permanent solution, even if this ordinance gets repealed?
Correct, Chris.
Okay. I'm satisfied with that for now.
All right.
Thank you.
You bet. Anything else? Gentlemen, um, we've got a motion on the floor. Your vote, please. And that is approved, six to two, with Councilman Claybaugh and Kerr voting against. Ordinance number 15-019 has been approved. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance implementing electric rates as recommended by the Board of Public Works.
Mayor, I move that ordinance number 15-020, the title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey, that ordinance be, uh, that said ordinance be given 15-020, title thereof be approved and the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Ordinance number 15-020 by number the first time.
Nothing.
Beg your pardon?
The motion passed eight, nothing.
Thank you.
No problem.
Ordinance number 15-020 by number the second time, and ordinance number 15-020 the third and final time.
Mayor, I move that ordinance number 15-020 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbach, that ordinance number 15-020 be passed and approved.
Every year, yes, every year before, we bring back usually our electric rate ordinance, and what we have before you is an electric rate ordinance that would call for a 3.8% rate increase, uh, across the board to all electric rates. Uh, as you're aware, an ordinance takes 15 days to come into effect once it's passed. In order to have this effective by January 1, 2016, when MPBD would impose their rate increase upon us, we need to present it to you tonight at this council meeting. Uh, we have proposed a 3.8% rate increase as due to the fact that we have not yet decided what to do with MPBD as far as their contract moving forward. As you're all well aware, if you sign their proposed new contract, your rate increase would be a .6%. If you don't sign it, it's 3.8%. So what we're proposing is that we impose, start, uh, the clock running on a 3.8% rate increase. If in between now and the end of the year, or whenever you would sign a new contract with MPBD, you can come back and simply amend this ordinance to charge a lower rate at that time. So, until that decision's made, we figure we'd start everything rolling with this proposed rate increase.
Stand.
Ted?
So this is my question to Tobias, uh, Mayor. Um, whether or not we go with, uh, Nebraska Public Power or some other entity, um, it's still within the power of this body to, uh, pass a rate increase at any amount, be it half a percent, 1%, 2%, it doesn't necessarily have to stay at this 3.85, correct?
No, you could do any number that you so chose.
So, so the vote tonight is simply is to move this thing forward, and this isn't, this rate isn't set in stone, and the next meeting or subsequent meetings from this, we can have an ordinance passed that requested a 1% increase. It's a big-
Correct. In theory, you could, you could entertain an electric rate ordinance every two weeks. Prefer you don't, but you could do it.
I do, too.
Yeah, I, it's, yeah, I was, I was gonna have a comment for that, but I, no, I believe, I just wanted to know. I, I, that's all I had.
Anybody else? Anybody from the audience? All right. We have a motion. Your vote, please. That is approved, eight, zero. Ordinance number 15-020 has been approved. Item on the agenda is the public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Anyone from the, uh, council have anything for the public forum? Phil?
For the January, uh, city council work session, I'd like to bring back, uh, 7th and 8th Streets going to two-way streets with the traffic committees.
I knew that was coming.
Mm-hmm.
Say it again, Phil. 7th and 8th Streets to two-way streets.
Going back to two-way. It's worked very well on South 7th from Ella over, so, from Market over. Excuse me.
Okay. Anyone else have anything for the public forum? Anyone from the audience? Yes?
Laura Young with Beatrice Area Chamber of Commerce. I just wanna take this time to thank Chief Lang and your staff and your officers, and the city council, and Tobias, for allowing us to have the parade on Thursday night. It was a great success, and for letting us cross the streets that we don't typically cross. Thank you very much. It was fun.
Thank you, Laura. All right. Uh, the next regular city council meeting is going to be on December 21st, 2015, at 7 o'clock in these rooms, and at this point, we will, uh, go into executive session.
Mayor, I move that the Beatrice City Council go on the closed session at 7:47 PM for the protection of public interest to discuss real estate and contract negotiations.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Claybaugh, that we go into executive session for the protection of public interest. Your vote, please, and that is approved, eight, zero. Thank you, everyone, for coming.